Hi everyone, I'm John Shulte, pastor of Christian Education and Discipleship. And I want to welcome you to this all-church Bible study on the book of Titus. Everyone's welcome, you could be junior high, senior high, you could be middle-aged, older folks, doesn't matter, everyone can join in on this Bible study, I think you will get something out of it. And I'm just glad you're here and participating with me, and all you need is to make sure you grab your Bible so that you can follow along and be a part of it. You'll note I like to mark my Bible up and underline certain passages and so forth. You may want to do the same, or get a few pieces of paper, or some kind of workbook, or whatever that you can put your notes in, because by the end of the series on this book of Titus, you should have a great commentary on the book that you can use in different studies that you get involved in with this, or when you lead your own study. This can be a helpful resource. So I am glad that you're here and participating with me. This is a part of a series of studies on what we call the Pastoral Epistles. And that includes 1st and 2 Timothy and Titus. And we did already cover the book of 1 Timothy, and that's online in our YouTube channel, or you can get it at the College of the Bible's online class, which I'll have the directions on the screen for you, so that you can find it there, and you can download things, and you can watch it at your leisure to catch up. But this study is the first on the book of Titus, or the epistle, meaning letter, the epistle of Paul to Titus. And I want to, before we jump into all the good stuff that's in the passage, and this is going to be kind of a meaty, heavy study, it's kind of exegetical, expository, I'm going to go verse by verse, looking at different words and phrases and their meaning, and thinking about what was behind them, and the inspiration that God gave to the Apostle Paul, as he wrote, through that rich language of the Greek, that helps capture the nuance of what they wanted to say, and hopefully, as we look at that, we pick up that richness for ourselves and our own church, and we can grow in our discipleship with the Lord. So that's the, kind of, the whole point. So we are going to be going through this verse by verse, it is, you know, a deep study, but again, you know, get your Bible. I'm kind of inclined to marking it up and everything, so you can do the same if you want to, but follow along, or you can just get a, you know, a little binder or something, a little book, and write your notes out, or a piece of paper, however you want to do it. But really, by the end of this series, you'll have a whole commentary on the book of Titus, which you can use whenever you come across a study, or Pastor Brian preaches a message on this particular book, you'll have some background and some understanding of it, or if you want to teach the class yourself. And if you do, just see me, be happy to get you an opportunity to teach in the College of the Bible, too. So lots of ways to do it. I thought we'd start out in this series, and we are going to Titus, even though we just finished covering 1 Timothy, we're going to go to Titus, and then we're going to move to 2 Timothy. We're kind of following it the way that the Apostle Paul did. First, he wrote to Timothy in 1 Timothy, then later he wrote to Titus, and then he returned and wrote again to Timothy. So the next series of studies will be based on 2 Timothy. But anyway, here we are on the book of Timothy, and I thought maybe we could give you a little background, a little sense of what the book was about, before we start really digging into it. And so, of course, the book was written to Titus, and that's how it got its name. And who was Titus? Well, Titus has been mentioned about 13 times in the New Testament, a lot of the times in 2 Corinthians, or at least in the two letters that Paul wrote, I think about nine times in 2 Corinthians that Titus is mentioned. Now, this book, in a lot of ways, is similar to 1 and 2 Timothy, and that's why we call them all the Pastoral Epistles. This is not a book about doctrine, and/or something in the way of trying to present new teaching information to the church as a whole. We've got other books like Romans and so forth, that Paul uses those things. Now here, Paul is assured that Titus has the doctrine and teachings that he needs to have, but the church needs a pastoral letter, it needs a letter of correction, it needs a letter of support and encouragement, it needs a letter of redirection. And so that's really what this letter and the other 1 and 2 Timothy letters are all about. And that's why we call them the Pastoral Epistles. They're just there to kind of realign the church, refocus it, give encouragement to the people that are put in positions to serve their Timothy, in the case of 1 and 2 Timothy, and now Titus. Now Titus was also a young man like Timothy, and he was probably, most scholars believe, that in Paul's first missionary journey, he was converted by Paul. He was a Gentile, we don't know much about his parents or anything else, but we do know that he was a Gentile who became a Christian. Now, a Gentile is anybody who wasn't a Jew. So he didn't come out of a Jewish background, didn't have the history of Judaism to help him understand the gospel, but he heard the gospel from Paul and became a Christian. He must have been a very astute student, very sharp, intelligent young man, caught on quick, understood the doctrines that Paul was teaching, because he began to travel with Paul in both the second and third missionary journey. And he was very, very helpful to Paul, and kind of cut his teeth on leadership and understanding the dynamics of this new church that was started at Pentecost in Corinth, the Church of Corinth. And he helped out Paul, and that's probably why Paul mentions him about nine times in the book of 2 Corinthians. And it's a probably, a lot of scholars feel like it was probably Titus who brought the letter, 2 Corinthians, and maybe 1 Corinthians, to the Church of Corinth, and that Titus did that. So it was written between 62 and 64 A.D. by Paul, and Paul had, in his first missionary journey, stopped on the island of Crete out in the Mediterranean, and established a church there. And then, of course, he moved on throughout his first missionary journey to start other churches and so forth, and then heard some things were going on that probably needed to be corrected, and we're going to look at some of those in this passage. And so, he doesn't have the time, although he did spend some time there in Crete with that church, he doesn't have the time to do all the things that need to be done. And so he takes Titus, one of his great friends and a mentee, he was the mentor to, this young Gentile who had converted to the faith, had traveled with him, and showed who he was and his commitment to the gospel with the second and third missionary journeys. And he puts him in the church of, that's in Crete, in the Isle of Crete, a beautiful island, but a very challenging position. Again, here we have a young man who's in a very challenging position, a lot like the young man Timothy, who was at the Church of Ephesus. Here, we have Titus at this church in Crete, and he has his hands full in kind of correcting them and getting them back on course. They had kind of faded out. Now, this was a challenging church, very challenging. If you turn, we'll get back to it, but if you turn over to chapter 1, verse 12, it gives you an idea of the kind of people that were in this church, what kind of challenge that Titus had. Let's look at verse 12, chapter 1, verse 12. "One of themselves, a prophet of their own," okay, so this is a Cretan, "who said, 'Cretans are always liars, evil beasts, lazy gluttons.'" And then in verse 13, Paul says, "Okay, this testimony is true, that's what they are. For this reason, reprove them severely," and it goes on, and we'll look at that a little bit later. So he gives some stern, you know, advice to Titus, "You've got to take this on, you know, this is going to be tough." Now, can you imagine going to a church, okay, and you're going to have to do some work there, and they describe it as "always liars, evil beasts, and lazy gluttons"? You know, I think about it, you see, you know, the Presbyterian Church puts out vacancy, you know, churches that are open and so forth, and I don't know if I've ever read that as a description of the church, you know, "Come out to California and serve this church, we're full of liars, evil beasts, and lazy gluttons." And let's see how many people sign up for that particular pastor. I'm not sure, he's got his hands full, he's a young guy, but you know, I mean, he must have really been blessed by the Lord with gifts, good preaching, teaching, because, you know, and Paul must have had a real faith in him and belief that he could do it, to put him in a situation like that. But that's the church that Titus takes on. And so, the island itself, Crete, is one of the, you know, the largest islands in the Mediterranean Sea. It is about 160 miles long and 35 miles wide, and it was, of course, visited by Paul. And later, he returned there to do some ministry there, and then in the end, he left Titus to continue the work and really kind of get them straightened around. Some of the same things were happening in the church here in Crete that happened for Timothy in Ephesus, and that is, they had people teaching the wrong doctrines that were upsetting the congregation. A lot of them were teaching that the Jewish law still held true even for Gentiles, and that's probably why Paul put a Gentile Christian in that place, so to show that, no, you don't have to follow the Jewish way, we're in a new covenant, right, established by Christ. And that new covenant is totally different from what was done before, the law is fulfilled in Christ. Let's see, now, as I mentioned, the, it's a pastoral epistle, so it's not really something that's there for doctrinal, you know, to try to teach doctrine. Paul certainly trusted that Titus had that doctrine down, and he was, he certainly wouldn't have put Titus in that position, had he not, that's for sure. But they were off course, they were caught up into a lot of stuff, and so the thrust of the book, the importance of the book, is really about getting the church back to the focus the church needs to have, and all churches need to have, and that's the focus on evangelism. You know, this epistle is all about equipping the church for evangelism. And not only that, but having godly leaders who would make sure the church continues to focus on reaching people for Christ, reaching people with the gospel, and then, the second thing, discipling them into being fully devoted followers of Christ. That's the work of the church, and they had gotten off on that, and so Paul sent Titus to get them back in line. And that's something that we see happen a lot, I think, in churches, and we'll talk about that as we get along, but churches have a tendency to naturally kind of drift away from the real vision, which is to bring the gospel to the unchurched, win them to Christ, and then make them fully developed followers of Christ. And there was plenty of non-Christians on the island of Crete, and he had his hands full, but that means that there was a great mission field for the church in Crete. And so if Timothy, or if Titus can get himself focused on what has to happen, there was going to be a great harvest for it. All right, so that's really the focus of the challenge that Titus has in the church of, in Crete there. All right, so it gives you a little background on where we're going and what's going to happen. In this study, all of our studies are going to be about 30 minutes or so, I try to keep them right in there, we're going to cover a lot of material, and, but I don't want to, you know, go too long, just enough to get you excited about it, and get you into the Word, and then reflect on it and so forth. I know some of the small groups are using this, our life groups are using this, I'm grateful for that, and I'm glad that that's helpful. Many people are doing it for their private devotions, you've sent me emails and so forth to tell me that, and some have even sent questions, and we've written back and forth. So that's been fun, and you're welcome to do that with this study as well. All right, let's jump in then, and look at chapter 1. We're probably going to go right through the first four verses. So, chapter 1, verse 1, "Paul, a bond servant of God and an apostle of Jesus Christ, for the faith of those chosen of God, and the knowledge of the truth, which is according to godliness." Now let's just stop there in that first verse, go back, and let's dig in to see what's, you know, what Paul is talking about here. You'll note that Paul says "a bond servant of God," I underlined that "bond servant," and that bond servant is someone who has been purchased, okay, to help them be established, to get them somewhere, they would sell themselves, so to speak, as a slave, and then they would work off that bond, you know, it's a bond, so they'd have to pay off the bond, and when they were, when they did that, they were made free. Now, he freely uses this to say that he is a bond slave of God. Now, he's not saying that he's going to work for his salvation, we know that, because in his magnum opus of doctrine and teaching in Romans and in other places, he makes it very clear that we cannot gain by our merit, gain by our work, our salvation, that's only done by Christ. So what he really wants you to be thinking about in saying that he's a bond servant of God, is the idea that he was purchased by God, right, with a price. Well, now, who is that? What, you know, what is, who purchased that? Well, of course, we see that in being Jesus Christ, right, because he goes on and says, "A bond servant of God and an apostle of Jesus Christ," and that means that, you know, Christ died for him, Christ paid the debt, and that debt, you know, that was paid, he now freely gives of himself to be a slave toward God, to work for God, to do everything that he can, and of course, he's doing that by being an apostle, an apostle of Jesus Christ, an apostle of the message of the gospel, the person who brings the message, you know, that of the work of Christ, of what Christ did out to everyone. So right away, he's beginning to build that idea, hey, that's what we all should be, we all need to be apostles, we all need to be spreading this good news. And then, "for the faith of those chosen of God," and I underlined "chosen of God." You see, he is an apostle, sharing the good news, so that people whom God elected to himself, right, would come to hear the gospel and respond, and all those who respond, and there were plenty of people who could respond in the island of Crete, and would then come to know the Lord, and be a part of that. And then, he writes and continues, "and the knowledge of the truth, which is according to godliness." The knowledge of truth, that's what you want to, so you preach the gospel, to share the gospel, so that all those elected by God, called to be His children, will hear the Word, come to the realization that they are the children of God, and respond, and then you give them the knowledge of truth, you disciple them to be fully devoted followers of Christ. He's setting it up right at the beginning, exactly what has to happen in the church in Crete and all churches, that's got to be our focus. We don't know who God has chosen, or called, or elected, but we do know that we preach the gospel, and when we preach the gospel, those whom God has called, come forth, you know, and rise up. And it is "which is according to godliness," and certainly, that is, you know, once we develop the fruit of the Spirit, we become godly, we become holy, you know, there's a sense of holiness, our life becomes sacred in the way that we live that. And then, in verse 2, "in the hope of eternal life, which God, who cannot lie, promised long ages ago." And I underlined that "hope," and it's so, and you know, it's interesting that we often hear that word "hope," and in our society today, hope is often kind of seen as cross your fingers, you know, hope to die, you know. I'm, you know, it may not happen, we're all going to hope that it does, you know, if good luck follows us, it'll probably have, that's the way we think about hope, really. And, but that's not the, that's not the gospel hope, that's not, that's not the hope that Christians have. It's not a contingency plan. See, our hope today, when we hear that word, oftentimes, we think, well, yeah, it could come to pass, that could happen, but just in case it doesn't have another plan, you know, Plan B, okay? That's not the hope that Christians have. The eternal life, hoping of eternal life isn't a, well, yeah, it might happen, it may not, you know, so we have to have a contingency plan? No, it's "the hope of eternal life, which God, who cannot lie," so we know he's not lying, it is truth, "promised long ages ago," and then verse 3, "but at the proper time manifested itself, became present," which is in Christ, so, which is Christ. And so we see that we have this hope, and Christian biblical hope is a hope of patience and to wait, and we live our lives waiting on that, knowing that God is faithful and will fulfill it. It may not be in our timeframe, in the way we want, and we know that we're not very good at patience anymore. I mean, today, you can go on Amazon, and boy, the other day, I ordered some things on Amazon, and I could get it the exact same day, I ordered it in the morning, had it by the afternoon, no problem at all. And so, we're not in a patient culture, we don't understand that patience, but this hope is a hope that includes patience, patiently waiting, that all will happen at the proper time, everything's going to happen at the proper time. That theme of a proper time runs all the way through Scripture, old, all the way through the New Testament. Let me just give you a few examples, and I'll pop them up on the screen for you, so that you can look them up. You know, of course, Galatians 4:4, how important that is, you know, that all came at this, you know, everything came together exactly as it had to come together for Christ to be born into the world. It was perfect. It may not have been in our timeframe, but it was in God's timeframe, and God's timeframe is always perfect. Look up Isaiah 60:22, there we see Isaiah talking about the same thing, and Daniel, chapter 11, 35, and Romans 5:8, and so many others, there's always this sense of when the proper time comes, and that's what always that God knows, and we have to be patient for, because we know if it's not happening now, then God is working all things to good. All things are happening to come about to that time when it will be fulfilled. And so, in verse 3, he says, "but at the proper time manifested," it becomes reality, "even His Word and the proclamation." And we know what was manifested, what was manifested to us was the incarnate Christ, you know, God incarnate in Christ, and that is then manifested through the proclamation of the Word today. In other words, what Paul is saying is, when you go to Crete, and all those, you know, liars and evil beasts and lazy gluttons, you've got to preach the gospel, because it is through the gospel that Christ is manifested in people's lives. It comes and appears to people, you know. We come to an understanding of this truth, the knowledge of the truth, as he wrote in verse 1, is "even His Word and the proclamation." And so that's why, that's one of the reasons why we hold preaching to be so important, it's central to our worship, it is so central to everything that we do, is the preaching of the Word. Every Sunday, we're preaching the Word, because we know that in the preaching of the Word, the Holy Spirit moves, Christ is manifested into people's lives, and that's a key part of the way that it works. And so, it must be, Titus was a great preacher, because why would Paul put somebody who couldn't preach very well in Crete, where they needed to have the manifestation of Christ? No, he was a good preacher, and he, you know, and he was there, and Paul's reminding him here, too, that's how things change, is with good biblical solid preaching, and that's what we want, and he goes on, "with which I was entrusted, according to the commandment of God, our Savior." It's a trust, it's a sacred trust. Good preaching is a sacred trust given to us, and we use it wisely, you know, for the manifestation of Christ, and it is a sacred trust given to Titus, and we need to use that, and know the power of that. Sometimes we've forgotten, I think, we get, it's easy to get away from that, oh, it's another sermon, doesn't really matter, or, you know, a lot of churches don't even have, the preaching of the Word is central to their worship anymore. But the fact is that Christ is manifested through the preaching of the Word, and that's how the Holy Spirit begins to move in people's lives, it is very, very powerful. And Titus is going to use that in his ministry there in Crete. Now we move to verse 4, to Titus, of course, the person who is now going to be in charge of the church there. "My true child," wonderful, the same kind of sentiment that he had for Timothy, right, you know, it's his disciple, you know, it's someone that he cared for and loved, and could see the giftedness, and so he has this really love for Titus, and I think that's beautiful, it's a beautiful passage there. "And he's a true child in a common faith," that's what makes us brothers, is we have this common faith, isn't that wonderful? I've been in that situation, too, where, you know, you get to know people, and you just, you just love them because they're a brother or sister in Christ, you know, you have that common faith, you know, you're coming from the same stuff, you believe the same thing, how wonderful that is. And then he gives his blessing, "grace and peace from God the Father, and Christ Jesus, our Savior." He blesses Titus as he begins to give him some instruction and direction for what he needs to do in the church. So he sets up right at the beginning, what's the thesis of the book? Evangelism, how's that going to happen? Through the preaching of the Word, and so he got that started, and we're going to see him then apply that to the rest of the book, and how Titus can then apply it in the church. Well, we've come to the end of our time together for this first session, covered the first four verses, got us started, lots of good things there. Now we're going to go into, next time, into the elders, leadership of the church, how important that is, right? If you want to change some things, you've got to have good leadership, and how important is for leadership to be doing all the things that Paul talked about, not just Titus, but all the leadership of the church. And so we're going to get into that next time, I look forward to it. You can read ahead, finish out that chapter 1, and be ready to go, and I look forward to you being here next time.